Bob, Mr. Rankin, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
All right. It's 6:30 PM and the Faukeer County School Board meeting is called to order. Ms. Williams, will you please lead us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance tonight? Thank you very much.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We had a really loud participation section down here. Good job. Ms. Callahan, will you please call roll? And Mr. Mason, welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Great to have you here. Do I have a motion on the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I propose or motion that we amend the agenda to remove Information Item 6A, the proposed middle school wrestling program, from discussion tonight and approve the modified agenda accordingly.
Second.
We have a motion and a second that the school board approve the agenda with the removal of Information Item 6A tonight. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. And the motion passes and we adopted the agenda with that one removal. We will move right into our special presentations this evening. We have many recognitions this evening, so please come forward when you hear your name and return to your seat following your recognition. We will take a few moments following the recognition for those of you who wish to leave and exit the auditorium. Tonight's agenda is not that riveting, so if you do feel like you'd like to leave...
Come on, Brian.
You shouldn't have told them that. Now they're all gonna leave.
We try to get people here all the time, but we'll announce when you can leave. Thank you very much.
All right. It's all right. I'll tell you, there's something we just alluded to on the stage, but there's something when you spend a lot of time in your office, something really special about hearing children say the Pledge of Allegiance. It's a little thing, but when you get to be old like me and some others, it's nice to hear. The Tree Awards are a result of the Aspirations 2016 Strategic Plan, were established to ensure that FCP has classified employees were recognized for their outstanding work and accomplishments, interactions with others, demonstrations of initiative, training and development activities, and their ability to improve the work process. The following are the first and second place winners in each category of the fifth annual Faukeer County Public Schools Tree Awards. Second place winners receive $250 and first place winners receive $500. And now for the Aspen Tree Award for bus drivers, second place. Our second place recipient for the Aspen Tree Award is Rhonda Mills, Transportation Bus Driver. Rhonda has driven the bus for many years, 21 in fact. She started when she was 11. Did they give drivers licenses then? For some, that can mean they have, they may no longer care for what they do and have a whatever attitude. For her, this is not the case. She puts her students first, always. Rhonda works well with her peers and is a serious person, expecting others to take what they do very seriously. She understands that bus driver, bus driving is not just a job. Rhonda has demonstrated throughout her time at FCPS that she will do whatever it takes to make a situation great. She regularly demonstrates perseverance. Thank you, Rhonda. And now for the first place award recipient. The first place winner is Joyce Obanyan. Joyce. Joyce Obanyan has been a dedicated school bus driver for FCPS since 2000. There have been many, many changes in pupil transportation over the years, and she has never faltered in her interest in work, ethical conduct, loyalty to the division and department, willingness to accept difficult assignments, and dependability. Cooperation with supervisors, school staff, coworkers, and parents goes without saying. Despite not having a regular route, she makes it a point to have a great relationship with students, staff, and parents, and she continues to go above and beyond. Thank you, Joyce. The Maple Tree Awards are for custodial staff, courier, and area building managers. Second place, our second place Maple Tree Award recipient is Dee Britt, Kettle Run High School Assistant Head Custodian. Dee, where are you? No, come on here for the real thing. I love to give Dee a hard time when I go to Kettle Run, but I'll say this, every time I go over there, she's working, pretty amazing. Dee Britt routinely performs the duties beyond the expectations that have been established. She is the day shift supervisor and is willing to do whatever is asked of her with a smile. She does her normal daily obligations and is very flexible in any situation that may occur throughout the school day. If you come by KRHS, you will see Dee smiling and working hard. Very true. She often goes beyond expectations and is very proactive to situations that occur within the school day. One new employee to Faukeer County shared, "She has answered all of my questions and shown me the ins and outs of KRHS. This has allowed me to perform my duties in a better way." Thank you, Dee. The first place recipient of the Maple Tree Award is Stacy Bell, HM Pearson Head Custodian. Come on up, Stacy. Stacy Bell has made enormous positive differences in our school since becoming Head Custodian this past fall. She stepped into the position temporarily and provided and proved to be excellent, dependable, and dedicated, working to keep the entire school sparkling and attractive. She was charged with the daunting task of not only stepping into supervisory shoes, but often with a skeletal staff. Stacy rose to the occasion, looking for every opportunity to learn, seek out information, and make good use of her ability to inspire others to learn with her. Not only does our environment appear more pristine and appealing, but the atmosphere has also improved. Teachers are happy to come to work in a clean classroom. Thank you, Stacy. The Oak Tree Award are for instructional assistants, library aides, and bus aides. This year's second place recipient of the Oak Tree Award is Marion Jones, Transportation Bus Aid. Marion works well with her peers and works especially well with her students despite their multiple disabilities. She is an asset to our staff. She has a maturity that enables her to stay calm under trying circumstances and yet have the ability to laugh at herself with her students. She keeps things on the bus stable, and that helps the driver to focus her attention on driving the bus. She accepts each challenge with grace and maturity of the woman she is, always putting her each child first. Marion is committed to her students. Thank you, Marion. And the first place award recipient for the Oak Tree Award is Victoria Hill, Kettle Run High School Instructional Assistant Remediation. Victoria. Victoria is not here, but I'm gonna read this briefly. Victoria has been an outstanding member of the Kettle Run staff since the fall of 2014-15. She serves students as well as our remediation instructional assistant. She demonstrates the ability to work independently as well as cooperatively. She adapts well to changes, works well under pressure, and maintains a positive attitude. She has created an environment that reflects warmth and caring, trust, a culture for learning, and high expectations for students, for student achievements. She is also, she is often found in a room after hours working with students on classwork and homework. Thank you, Tori. The Pine Tree Award is for school nutritional staff. The second place award winner, and I'm very sorry to say that this person will also be retiring at the end of this school year, the second place award recipient is Sandy Owens, Coleman Elementary School Nutrition Manager. And she brought her cheering section with her. Good, good move. Sandy has worked at Coleman for 35 years. She brings a positive attitude to our school each and every day. All of our students are fed with a smile. Sandy has demonstrated many accomplishments by keeping the daily functions of our school kitchen running smoothly and meeting the needs of students, staff, and guests. She is intent that no child leaves school hungry. Sandy has been very creative with her breakfast promotions. Sandy does her job to the fullest each day. She often stays late to complete daily and monthly reports or to prep for the next day's menu. Mrs. Owens helps the PTO when they have different functions in our school. She will retire at the end of this year, and she will be dearly missed. Thank you, Sandy. And the first place Pine Tree Award recipient is Tori Kearns, Brumfield Nutrition Manager. Come on up, Tori. Tori always goes out of her way to complete a job and then some. She decorates her serving lines for each holiday or event, and the smiles on the children's faces make all of her hard work pay off. She is always ready for any challenge, and her work truly shines through in the school. She ensures that students feel comfortable and gives them a reason to look forward to breakfast and lunch. She implemented Breakfast to Go and Donut Day. I've never been invited to Donut Day. I'd like to know when that is. In order to have all of her staff cross-trained for different aspects of the kitchen, she rotates jobs responsibilities regularly. That's smart. She also promotes stronger teamwork as they are able to help each other. This is truly an asset to Brumfield Elementary. Thank you, Tori. And lastly, we have the Willow Tree Awards for clerical, nurses, support staff, including administrative secretaries, nurses, and IT employees. Our second place recipient for the Pine Tree Award this year is Lori Untied, HM Pearson Secretary and Bookkeeper. Lori assumed the bookkeeping secretary position at HM Pearson this past year. In that short time, she has performed a small miracle. Not only did she learn the many tasks associated with the job, she brought office practices and procedures into the 21st century. Lori presents a genuinely warm welcome to all of who enter the Pearson office. She demonstrates exceptional patience and calm even during times of significant stress. With Ms. Untied as the Secretary of Bookkeeper, people are assured that all are welcome and have their needs addressed and appropriately distributing supplies to the right people. Through her consistent presence, Lori has worked hard to establish predictability and trust at HMP. Thank you, Lori. All right, and last but not least, the first place recipient for the Pine Tree Award is Debbie Swatko, Facilities Office Associate 2. There she is. Debbie coordinates multiple tasks on a routine basis and never hesitates to take on additional assignments. Debbie has worked collaboratively with our department to develop appropriate trainings for custodial staff. Debbie interfaces with administration and staff with ease and has quickly established a solid working rapport. Multiple vendors have also commented on how much they enjoy working with Debbie and how efficient and professional she always is. During the past year, the Facilities Department converted the Door Access software, and Debbie, on her own initiative, took it upon herself to seek out training for the new software. Debbie is an instrumental employee within our department. Congratulations, Debbie, and thank you. And please, please join me for one final round of applause for the 2015-16 Tree Award winners. Congratulations.
And now it is our pleasure to acknowledge a special teacher, a special principal, and several outstanding students. Will Amy Havich please join us? She's here. Amy Havich is chosen from among 17 teachers as our Teacher of the Year for Faukeer County 2016. Let me just tell you about Amy. She's a multiple disability special education teacher at Bradley, and in one nomination letter that we received, we learned that Ms. Havich gave a treasured gift to the parents of one of her students who was homebound after surgery. That gift was the realization that their daughter was not only capable of learning, but that she was indeed learning. They realized this when Ms. Havich visited their home and pulled out buttons with colors on them and asked their daughter to pick one, pick out each color. The family watched as their daughter chose every color correctly, and her mother said this, that it was the best gift that anyone could give a parent. Ms. Havich believes that she is the one receiving the gifts, every time her students are able to achieve or enjoy something that other kids achieve and enjoy so easily. She said that she accepted the position at Bradley not knowing if this was something that she would be stepping, would be a stepping stone or where it would lead, but once she was there, she fell in love with it and cannot see herself doing anything else. Ms. Havich makes her classroom a place where success can grow no matter the obstacles, and colleagues say that no obstacle will stand in her way when her students and their needs are involved. Her assistant principal, Kim McKinney, said Amy's dedication to her students is exceptional and evident both in school and outside school hours. She loves her students as if they were her own. Let's please congratulate Ms. Amy Havich, our Teacher of the Year. And now we're going to move to some of our student groups. We would like to ask the FBLA student winners who are here today to please join us up front. The Future Business Leaders of America is an educational association of student members preparing for careers in business and business-related fields. The Virginia FBLA develops America's future business leaders. I'll ask the students to please just raise your hand when I call your name. First, Faukeer High School student Diana Mahia and Tyler Devers took third place in entrepreneurship at the state championship where they assumed the role of entrepreneurs. This event is based on a team rather than individual participation, emphasizing the importance of collaboration, a skill that is highly needed in the workplace and higher education. And we are proud of your accomplishment, Diana and Tyler. Then, two, you can stay right there, two Faukeer High School students will advance to the national competition. As second place winners in the state in the management decision-making event, Victoria Kronke and Kate Bolter will move on to the National FBLA Leadership Conference in Atlanta, Georgia, next month. At the national competition, Victoria and Kate will assume the roles of management and present a solution to the case study problem presented to them in a timed format, and we know that they will represent us well. Please congratulate these future Business Leaders of America. And now we're going to move to indoor track, cross-country, and pole vault. Will Austin Allen from Liberty High School please come forward? And then, as well as those in attendance with the Faukeer High School Track and Cross-Country teams, we'd like you all to come forward. Okay. They are here. Are they here? Well, maybe they're not, just with Liberty. At the Virginia Group 4A Meet, Liberty High School's Austin Allen soared to win the class for a pole vault title with an outstanding performance and school record vault of 14 feet. I gotta say more about you. I have to tell you this. Here's what's amazing. His pole, is this true, broke right before he was supposed to compete? And you all know, that's like a golfer losing a favorite golf club and all, you know, all that stuff. He borrowed the competitor's pole and won the title for the state championship. So I think that is just great. Congratulations. And I want to ask one more time, the track team from Faukeer, not here? Okay. I just will tell you this, that the Faukeer Times reported the following. The Faukeer High Boys Track Squad opened the Virginia Group 4A State Track Meet by winning a relay in state record time. This was certainly a great beginning, but it was not only a state record-winning event by the Faukeer Boys varsity indoor track team that day. There were so many other broken records at that time, at the 3200 relay race, at the 1600 relay race, and so many more. I do want to mention that Tyler Benson from Faukeer High School received one of 19 Virginia High School League Achievement Awards. He was chosen the Outstanding Male Athlete in our division based on not only athletics but academics and community involvement. So let's give them a hand in their absence. And next, will the students who participated in the state DECA competition please come DECA is an international association of marketing students that provides students hands-on experiences in the fields of management, business services, travel and tourism, and sports marketing. Four Faukeer High School students qualify for the national DECA competition by taking top honors in the DECA State Leadership Conference in Virginia Beach. Please step forward as I call your name. Victoria Kronke, and we've seen her before, and Tyler Devers placed second and third in state respectively in the accounting competition. Oliver Wrigley and Emma Siemensky placed high enough to qualify to advance to national competition in sports and entertainment marketing. I want to tell you, in the role-playing events, participants are allowed only 10 minutes to look at a situation, a case study, and develop a professional approach to solving a problem. And all of these students excelled in that particular category, so we are just so happy that they did that and they're representing us well. Congratulations. And now Dr. Jack is going to recognize our next five honorees to include a recognition of our special principal honoree tonight.
FHS Academic Team Champions, will the Faukeer High School academic team please come forward? I know saw all of you here. Come on up. The general purpose of the Virginia High School League Scholastic Bowl Program is to stimulate interest and recognize students for their academic knowledge. The league encourages competition, emphasizing knowledge in English, math, science, social studies, arts, sports, and current events. Please step forward when I call your name. Give you a minute to get up here.
Dr. Jack, I did want to mention their teacher, Liz Monser, is going to present them this morning.
Liz Monser, come on up. She's got gifts for you. This is, this is their coach. Sorry, I apologize. And I'm just gonna go ahead and declare Liz the Scholastic Bowl Coach of the Year for the state of Virginia. Can I do that? How much, how much trouble can I get in for doing that? Probably, probably not much. So as I call your name, just take a step forward. Mark Whedonfeld, Angel Marshall? I didn't see Angel. Chris Perios, Niles Ribero, Jeremy Alexander, Joel McGuire, Shelby Bush, and Joe Barrett. Remaining undefeated from the beginning of the season to the end, which included 23 regular and postseason matches, all the way through the state championship competition, the Faukeer High School academic team landed in first place in the Virginia High School League Scholastic State Tournament. That's very, very impressive. Please take, join us as we congratulate the undefeated academic championship team. All right, you're free to go. Congratulations. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I am so sorry. Can I help you?
Yeah, Jeremy's right there, in the blue and the red.
This is great. Awesome. Nice. Congratulations. From the African. More.
Can I come on over this?
McGuire. Yes, sir. You're welcome.
Once you get your ring, you can come on over.
Ooh, put the ring on, put the ring on. Look at that. It is nice. Oh my gosh. Come on by after you get your ring and we'll hand you your certificate.
And you are...
Yeah, I got the certificate.
Gotcha.
I have four.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
She handing everything.
Okay, good. Congratulations, you are.
Oh, somebody else has yours, Chris.
Um, Jeremy?
Yes, thank you.
Congratulations.
Wow, what a team.
I don't know what that person is.
That is a beautiful ring.
Awesome. All right. Destination Imagination, will the DI teams please join us up front? All of you, come on down.
Wow. Very good. Okay. Destination Imagination is one of the world's largest creativity programs for youth of all ages with 100,000 student participants in over 30, excuse me, three countries. This program's helped student, student teams discover how to build important life skills such as problem-solving, teamwork, and divergent thinking. Teams discover how to solve challenges within time and budget constraints and have fun while learning and competing. Three Destination Imagination teams have qualified to represent Faukeer County Public Schools at the Globals, which is in two days at the University of Tennessee in Knoxville. Are you all going to that?
Yeah.
Awesome. Awesome. That is great. My, my invitation must have got lost in the mail. That's fine. The pajama, as I call your name, please step forward. The pajama jammas from Cedar League. Won first place at the regional and state tournament. Team members are Peyton Fowler, Megan Tucker, Mary Hostlander, Emily Markley, Sidney Merrick, and Erin Frederick. The team had to choose a community need and plan and then carry out a community event. They chose Mr. Holland's Opus Foundation as their need, a foundation which supports schools with underfunded music programs. All team members are musicians, and this need was important to them. Congratulations. Very good. Next, we have the Crazy Pink Pushings from Pierce Elementary. Finished second at the regionals and came in first at the state competition. The team members are Bethany Barner, Drew Cold, Eva Trump, Colin, Eva Trump, excuse me, Colin Pollan, Grace Smith, Josh Cooper, and Alexis Haynes. They created a story, complete with costumes, props, and sets, about a cuttlefish who breaks an... They placed third at the state DI competition after placing second at the regionals in the technical challenge. The students created a vehicle that moved on wheels with a small motor and flipped over to be a sled. The vehicle decorated to look like a turtle was part of their skit about change narrated by Mother Nature. Please join us as we congratulate these inventive and innovative students and wishing them great success at Globals in Knoxville. Congratulations. Next, we have the FHS State Championship Wrestling Team. Do we have any wrestlers from Falkir High School here? Come on down for your triumphant return to Liberty High School. Come on down. Wow. Big group. Okay, I'm going to start reading. For the second consecutive year, Falkir High School celebrates their wrestling team's Class 4A state title for what the Times has called "a sweet repeat." And sweet it is. As a team, the Falcons earn nine pins to earn needed points, bonus points, to win their state title. Please come forward when you hear your name called. The wrestling team members are A.J. Prudham. You can actually, that's fine too.
You want to have them go and then we'll do it?
Sure, that's great.
Then they can stay.
Alex Batista. Yeah, you can just, you want them to stay or that works too. Congratulations. Joel Delgalo. Congratulations. Kyle Budd. Ethan Jordan. Ty Foster. Kyle Roche. Camden Franklin. Caleb Strum. Franco Camarca. Kevin McKeachan. Rob Patchett. Garrett Tingian. Clifford Harrison. Thomas Palmer, and Rob Moore. All right, so before you, before you head back to your seats, I want to recognize those individual state placers or champions. Kyle Budd won the state champion, state title for 113-pound weight class. Last year, he placed second. Todd Foster was third in the state at 126 pounds for the second consecutive year. Kyle Roche was runner-up at 138 pounds for the second consecutive year. Caleb Strum won third in state at 145 pounds. Gary Tingian won the state title at 160 pounds weight class, his third state title, third, and Falkir's first three-time champ. And Clifford Harrison was a state runner-up at 170 pounds. Congratulations. And we'll see you back here this time next year. Science Fair state winners, will the Virginia State Science and Engineering Fair winners please come forward? I think we have two. Come on up, come on down. Is Meredith here? Okay, Meredith, I'm going to need your help in a second, okay? Falkir County Schools made a show for us at the 31st Annual Virginia State Science and Engineering Fair last month, competing in one of 17 categories with over 260 high schools representing one of 12 affiliated regional fairs in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and ours is one of those. Falkir County students walked away with four awards. We are recognizing two students who earned one of the top three awards. Mackenzie Barrett won first place in the state in physics and astronomy, while Meredith Palmore won third place in the state in environmental sciences. Mackenzie's project was, I like your title better than Meredith's, but not because of the project itself, fighting fire with bass frequency and harmonic overtones. Mackenzie's entry topped 17 other projects, including those from Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology. Oh, that feels so good to read that. Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology, Loudoun County Academy of Science, and New Horizons Governor's School for Science and Technology. Congratulations. Meredith's project, which I'm not going to read, Meredith, would you please read your project?
Reuse of Radis Norvegicus 18S oligonucleotide primer for the DNA amplification of Notothalma's ferodescens.
Meredith, I'm going to give you some advice. Next year, pick an original topic. People do this one over and over again. She took third place in a category with 20 projects. In the fall, Mackenzie plans to double-major in applied mathematics and chemistry as she completes a pre-medical program at Case Western Reserve University, Ohio, on a $62,000 academic scholarship. And Meredith is graduating, is a graduating senior at Mountain Vista Governor's School and Kettle Run High School and will be attending the finest university in all of Virginia, the University of Virginia this fall. Please join us in congratulating these two high-achieving young ladies. All right, now, last but not least, we have a retiring principal this year, Judy Williams. Our final recognition this evening is Miss Judy Williams. Will Miss Williams and those who are here to honor her please come forward? I think there's several. Come on up. How are you? Judy Williams, Principal of Miller Elementary School for the past 12 years and recipient of the Washington Post 2014 Distinguished Educational Leadership Award winners, is leaving us. Mrs. Williams has spent her entire career in Falkir County Public Schools. She earned a Bachelor of Science in Elementary Education at Longwood College and then landed her first job here in 1977 as a first-grade teacher at Pearson Elementary School where she taught for 11 years. She then taught for two years at Southeastern Elementary as a fifth-grade teacher. Ready for a new challenge, she earned a Master's in Education in School Administration from George Mason University and became Assistant Principal at Miller, a position she's held for 14 years before being named, she held for 14 years before she was named principal in 2004. Mrs. Williams has successfully led the school through some very rough waters. From 2008 through 11, when Miller was a Title I school in improvement, she was faced with a host of no-child-left-hand regulations that have been implemented, including in the establishment of the After-School Tutoring Program known as Supplemental Educational Services, or SES. As a testimony to her leadership, the Virginia Department of Education recognized the SES program at Miller as one of the most successful in the state. Mrs. Williams said, quote, "Biltin' is on the cusp of great changes, and I feel it's time for Grace Miller to grow and adapt to those changes to become Grace Miller Elementary 2.0. To become a new and improved version, the school needs new leadership and a new vision. We believe whoever follows as principal at Grace Miller will have big shoes to fill." Please join us, along with some of her students, who have gifts for her, to say goodbye to Miss Williams and wish her the very best in her retirement. Congratulations. Did you want to say anything?
Thank you.
You can come around.
Thank you. I just want to thank everyone. When I counted up and realized that it'd been 39 years, the number kind of shocks you. And when you read it all, that was a long time in each thing. But I do want to thank you for all of your support throughout my years in Falkir County. This is a wonderful school system. You must surely know that, and it all depends on the people that are at the top and the people that are doing the day-to-day jobs, because together we work as a team, and that's what makes things work here at Miller, at Miller and Falkir. Take care. Thank you.
And I think that's the conclusion of that part of our program. If you'd like to stay, by all means, stay, but we'll take a brief minute to allow people, if they'd like to clear out, to clear out. Thank you all for coming tonight. Congratulations.
And where are presenters who are presenting information items going to speak? At the podium? It's a work session. We've never done a work session where we're talking to one person. All right. Well, let's move on to information item 6B, Budget Transfer for CSA.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Dr. Jack. I'm here to talk about a budget transfer for CSA. This is the Child Services Act that was enacted in 1992, as you know, and we are in a partnership with the county government to provide collaborative solutions for children that are at risk. And these services are provided by CPMT, which stands for Community Policy and Management Team. This budget transfer is basically a two-parts. On March 10th, the Board of County Supervisors approved amendments to their existing budget, and these amendments included a local share from the schools. Our part of the partnership deals with children that we place outside of the county, and so this is just our share for that portion of our partnership. If you have any questions, you can send me an email or let me know now, but we plan to discuss this further if there's any questions also in the next Finance Committee meeting. Thank you.
Any questions? No one? Anybody? Okay. And we now move to item 6C, Contract Extension for Translator and Interpreter Positions. And I think you're just up here for the next three items, is that correct?
I am, up for the duration. Good evening. The following request is to request approval of a contract extension for our translators and interpreters by five days. That would be taking them from 10 months to 10.25. We recently took this to Personnel Committee where we unanimously supported it for board action. These individuals are sorely needed in our schools during summer and prior to school opening, so I would ask that if we could move this to action tonight. Any questions?
Personnel Committee, fine. Good.
We're good with it.
Funding, all that good stuff is in place. Okay.
No new money.
No new money. That's what I want to hear.
Current budget, right.
That's what I told you, Suzanne, right?
You did tell me he said that. Your ears must have been burning that day.
Okay, the next two items I'd like to join together as one, but they are listed as two separate items. We're requesting to take a full-time position, position number 1328, and divide it into two part-time positions. The first one's a request to approve a part-time agriculture teacher for our middle schools. Interest in agri-science at the middle schools growing, both Taylor and Marshall's numbers are up, requiring that principals to close some of their classes to eighth graders, and we hope that the adding of this part-time position would be able to be placed at Taylor or Marshall or both, if we could find the right person. So that's half the position. The other half of the position, we're requesting to approve a part-time, permanent, elementary, gifted, and talented teacher for Mary Walter Elementary School. And this is for equity purposes. Both, so the money since it's an existing position is within the budget, we're just asking to change the allocation. This also went to Personnel Committee, and they supported it unanimously. Okay, move to the next one?
Yes, that'd be great.
Oh, I'm asking for that to go to action as well this evening. The final item tonight is request to approve a position upgrade for one of our school board administrative assistants from Office Associate 2 to Office Associate 3. Currently, the Office Associate 2 position is funded by the Title I program, but due to work needs, we would like to add to that position. She would support the Title 3 grant for ESL programs, also the local foreign language and ESL programs, and the Carl Perkins Grant, and also the management of CTE certifications and duties outside the grant management assigned by the ASI. This position would require $6,000 in local funding, so the majority of the position would stay grant-funded, but the additional duties would be supported by local funds. This position also went to Personnel Committee, and it was unanimously approved for the upgrade. And so there is an incumbent in the position currently.
There is?
There is, yes. It's not vacant, it's full. Any questions?
Personnel Committee?
Yes.
Any other questions? No?
Thank you.
Okay.
I'll move that the school board move information items 6C, D, E, and F to action items 7B, C, D, and E for consideration for approval this evening.
There's been a motion in a second that the school board move information items 6C, D, E, and F to action items 7B, C, D, and E for consideration for approval this evening. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no, and the motion passes, and we're going to move into action items.
I'll move that the school board approve the personnel recommendations, which include the reappointments of two assistant principals to interim principal, three assistant principals to interim assistant principals, one assistant principal to teaching position, one principal to certification specialist elementary recruitment administrator, the transfer of one assistant principal, and the non-renewal of one teacher.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second that the school board approve the personnel recommendations, which include the following: the reappointments of two assistant principals to interim principal, three assistant principals to interim assistant principals, one assistant principal to a teaching position, one principal to certification specialist for elementary recruitment administrator, the transfer of one assistant principal, and the non-renewal of one teacher. Any discussion?
I think y'all been busy.
Yeah, I think most of this came out in a press release. Is that correct?
Correct. Thank you.
Okay. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no, and the motion passes, and Dr. Jack would like to introduce somebody.
It's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Dennis Atkins. He is currently the Assistant Principal at Miller Elementary School, but as of, based on your actions, as of July 1, he will be the interim principal at Miller Elementary School. Dennis is very well-respected within the Miller community, very well-thought-of. He's been a sort of a cornerstone at that school, working alongside an excellent principal in Miss Williams, excuse me. So it's with pleasure that I introduce Dennis, and perfect timing, Mr. Gardner. Also, the recommendation that you just approved included the moving Mr. Tim Gardner, who's currently the Assistant Principal at Ritchie, a position he's held for six years, is that long? Six years prior to that, he was in ITRT, and he'll be taking over at Greenville with the departure of Dr. Phillips. He'll be taking over as the interim principal there beginning July 1. We're very excited to have these two gentlemen step into these two...
one principal to certification specialist, elementary recruitment administrator, the transfer of one assistant principal, and the non-renewal of one teacher.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second that the school board approve the personnel recommendations, which include the following. The reappointments of two assistant principals to interim principal, three assistant principals to interim assistant principals, one assistant principal to a teaching position, one principal to certification specialist for elementary and recruitment, and elementary recruitment administrator, the transfer of one assistant principal, and the non-renewal of one teacher. Any discussion?
No, y'all been busy.
Yeah, I think most of this came out in a press release last week, correct?
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no, and the motion passes. And Dr. Jack would like to introduce somebody.
It's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Dennis Atkins. He is currently the assistant principal at Miller Elementary School. But as of, based on your actions, as of July 1, he will be the interim principal at Miller Elementary, Miller Elementary School. Dennis is very well-respected within the Miller community, very well thought of. He's been a, sort of a cornerstone at that school, working alongside an excellent principal in Ms. Mill, uh, Ms. Williams, excuse me. So it's, uh, it's with pleasure that I introduce Dennis, and perfect timing, Mr. Gardner. Also, the recommendation that you just approved included the moving Mr. Tim Gardner, who's currently the assistant principal at Ritchie, a position he's held for six years, is that long? Six years prior to that, he was in ITRT. And he'll be taking over at Greenville with the departure of Dr. Phillips. He'll be taking over as the interim principal there beginning July 1. We're very excited to have these two gentlemen step into these two monumentally important positions, and really appreciate their service to the county, and appreciate the board's approval of these two moves. And as, as is the tradition, the new principals have to say something when they're introduced. Dennis will go first. I didn't mean you had to come to the mic, but all right, go ahead.
Get any chance to get a mic in my hand? Um, no, I would like to thank Dr. Jack and the board for having confidence in appointing me to this position. Yes, I have big shoes to fill, so I'm not really gonna try to fill them. We kinda retired her shoes, and we bought some new shoes at Grace Miller, so we can take it forward into, you know, the 21st century and Grace Miller 2.0.
Great, excellent.
Still catching my breath, I ran over from our kindergarten graduation tonight, so, thank you. But it's just a real honor and privilege to be appointed interim principal at Greenville. I'm very excited about the opportunity, and I'm excited to connect with those teachers in that community, and give everything I can to it. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. All right. We move on to Contract Extension for Translator/Interpreter Positions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the school board approve the contract extension for translator/interpreter position by five days.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second that the school board approve the contract extension for translator/interpreter positions by five days. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no, and the motion passes.
All right, Donald, you got this one.
I'll move that the school board approve the part-time agriculture teacher position. Thank you.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second that the school board approve the part-time agriculture teacher position. Any discussion?
No, I've just tickled to death to see those programs growing.
Yeah, absolutely. Seeing the trout program this year was amazing.
Got one of them coming up to Marshall, so that's great.
All right. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no, and the motion passes.
Good, I move that the school board approve the part-time gifted and talented teaching position.
And a second.
There's been a motion in a second that the school board approve the part-time gifted and talented teaching position. Any discussion? So, can I just ask a question? Was this, this was a, we've been planning this one for a while, right? And it's just a real equity issue as well, so. Yeah, absolutely. All right. Any, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no, and the motion passes.
Mr. Chair, I would like to offer the motion that the school board approve reclassification of the school board office Associate 2 position to an Office Associate 3 position.
Second.
There's been a, a motion in a second that the school board approve the reclassification of the school board office Associate 2 position to an Office Associate 3 position. Any discussion? The only thing, it says on our, I just wanna make sure it's an Office Associate position, is that correct? It's Office Associate position, okay.
Office of social, association, which one?
Associate.
Associate.
Additional duties.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no, and the motion passes. Is there any other information to come before the school board? And I, I have a statement to read about an issue that's come up recently.
Okay.
Any other? I'd just like to read to the board a statement of clarification, I believe, about the recent federal government guidance on Title IX application relating to gender identity in schools. I have received a lot of conversation about this. Some emails, some phone calls, but mostly people in quiet corners talking about this, 'cause it's a sensitive subject, people don't wanna talk about it. And there's a lot of unknowns about that. So I just wanted to put out there, because we've had some email, and it's not all been very positive about us basically saying, or the, the school division in the newspapers stating our, where we stand on this. And this is my own interpretation of where we are. But if anybody would like to offer other opinions or views on this, they very well may. The Civil Rights Divisions of the U.S. Department of Education and the Department of Justice published a joint letter titled "Dear Colleague Letter on Transgender Students" on May 13, 2016. This letter, which was self-described as a "letter of significance", has not been received by Faukeer County Public Schools, to my knowledge. Have we received, actually, a copy of the letter? I've only seen it.
We've received the letter.
We did receive the letter, okay. "It provides the Federal Administration's guidance on compliance with Title IX, which prohibits sex discrimination in educational programs and activities operated by recipients of federal financial assistance. The letter's stated purpose is to provide information and examples to inform recipients of federal education funds about how the departments evaluate whether covered entities are complying with their legal obligations. The letter of guidance also uses Department of Justice and Department of Education definitions of gender identity, transgender, and gender translation. Some of these terms have different definitions in publicly available dictionaries than were provided in the letter. The Faukeer County Public School Board has not yet taken a position on this matter. The guidance from the administration, the federal administration is non-biding, meaning there are currently no law, no laws enforceable in the Commonwealth of Virginia that direct us to change regarding transgender student use of restrooms, locker rooms, or athletics. The Fourth Circuit will be revisiting this issue, but as it stands now, there's no ruling coming from any federal court that gives our school division any clear direction. However, the guidance from the Department of Justice and the Department of Education is coupled with a threat of eliminating funding for programs designed to meet the needs of our most vulnerable students. Without any action, the Faukeer County Public School Board will current, use the current procedures currently in use, and those will remain without any further action." Again, those are my own, my own interpretation of where we stand. But as of right now, we have not made any determination about responding to that letter of guidance.
Mr. Chairman, I, I really think you're spot-on there. There's, there's nothing that, that's tangible right now that we can look at and address the, the current situation until we see what comes down from the Fourth District Court and so forth. So I really think that, that statement is very valid.
All right, that being said, move to adjourn?
Second.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much for coming this evening.